Authority. I want to start by commending you for a very good work done. You move a loss or a deficit situation of 1.8 million in 2022 to 24.6 million in surplus in 2023 and presented increment of 1,268 percent. That is very, very good. So I don't have much to say, but I just need some explanation. If we look at your financial performance, I'm seeing GOG compensation received. What is it?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. The Food and Drug Authority receives GOG intervention in the form of salaries of staff. So the salary government pays on behalf of staff is what we term GOG intervention in terms of compensation.
So the money received from the government in respect to our salary is that is that one?
Yes, sir.
But if you go to the expenditure, the compensation is different. You you receive 38 million and you paid 64 million. Is that the case?
Yeah, so Honorable Chair, the composition in the expenditure is twofold. We have that of GOG compensation and IGF compensation put together. So the competition for the whole FDA is both GOG compensation and IGF compensation. That's why that figure is bigger than the receipt from government.
I'm seeing donor inflows, 30 million. And if we go to the expenditure, donor outflows, 9 million. What's what's accounted for that?
So Honorable Chair, the donor inflow represent funds we receive from donor agencies in terms of grant for our project. And in the course of spending, we may not spend all in the financial year. So we received about 12 million and we spent about 9 million. So that's what has been indicated in the financial report. Thank you.
As I said, is the report is good. So let's go to your financial position. I don't have much to say there except to still give you some commendation for moving your current ratio from 4.1 to 1 to 8.0 to 1, meaning that you have enough cash to meet your short-term financial obligations. So I will just end here and advise that we keep the momentum. It's very good. Well done.
Thank you, as a chair.
All right, we'll look at the management issue and Honorable Abner Osasara will take care of that one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Before I go to that, I want to ask them what their retention percentage is. I see that with your IGF for 2022, you transferred 36 million into the consolidated fund. And in 2024, when you made 141 million, you transferred 38 million into the consolidated fund. And then in 2023, you made 184 and you you transferred 47.2 million. What is your retention percentage?
So Honorable Chair, thank you very much. Their retention has been changing over the years. It was 33 percent in 2017. By 2019, it moved to about 67. Last at the time of this report, it was 70 percent. We're retaining 70 percent of our IGF generation.
What is the process that you go through to have your retention percentage amended?
Honorable Chair, I think we applied to the Ministry of Finance for for consideration and they write to us to to change it, to amend it for us.
Yeah, I'm surprised it has changed over time, within the shortest possible time. You've moved from 33 percent to 70 percent. That's why I'm asking. And so you paid 30 percent into into the consolidated fund. And are you doing that consistently?
Yes, Honorable Chair, it's been deducted as such, so it's very consistent. And I must also put on record that you have been of tremendous help to us, to FDA, by helping us to facilitate the movement from the 33 to the 70 percent we currently hold.
Did you did you say she did?
Yes, she did. Yeah, she did, because I remember going to her office with my boss. So she did. And we were asking for 100 percent retention. So if we can still get our 100 percent, that would be great for us.
All right.
Thank you.
And also, your business at the port. And these days, we still find, I wouldn't say, maybe for lack of a better word, on wholesome things on our markets, but I know you are the ports checking all these things. How come some of these things are able to slip?
Honorable Chair, yes, we are the ports, but you also agree that we have a lot of porous borders within the country. In fact, we have borders that even we do not have customs and even immigration manning within within the country, because they are so they are so porous and it's not all the borders that we man. So we have unapproved routes and so.
They are not borders, but unapproved routes. Because for our borders, I know that we have customs and the necessary or relevant bodies there, so maybe unapproved routes.
Unapproved routes. So I think from those areas, we have those things slipping in. But we also have a strong post-market surveillance activities on the ground. So whenever our attention is drawn to them, we act swiftly to make sure that those products are not on our market. Thank you.
Honorable Minister, getting to Christmas, you see all shades and quality of cooking oil on the market. And sometimes it is very, very scary when you have cooking oil that's supposed to be vegetable oil in the sun and it is like lard, fat. You ask yourself, how did these things slip into our country? Because cooking oil are supposed to have some consistency in terms of the flow, but it's in the sun, but it's as semi-hard. And I know this cannot be the regular cooking oil. So we ask that the surveillance will be more especially around the Christmas festivities so that we don't have some of these things slipping in there. Your last one, Minister, has to do with the GFMIS revenue processing model. The auditor general said that during the audit in 2023, you hadn't implemented it. And so if you can give us an update whether it has been implemented and moving forward, you are using it as you are supposed to use it.
So thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, the caption is not wholly true. The observation given to us was that it was not fully being implemented, nor that it's not being implemented at all. We but we have now trained the staff to fully implement it, so it's been done.
Aha, you have maybe, so you can't say the caption is not true. Something that is not fully implemented, is not implemented. Yes. So the auditors are right, but I'm glad and happy that you said you are now, I mean, you have fully implemented it and you are using it. So something, things done in house are not what. You went to Sunday school, you went, so you should complete it for me. Yes, they are not done right. So, Honorable Minister, I think I'm done with.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, Food and Drug Authority, you are done. Now let's call National Health Insurance Authority.
Auditors, I think I failed to ask you to confirm. Can you please confirm if yes?
Yes, Honorable Chair, the model has been implemented and they are currently using it.
National Health Insurance Authority, could you please introduce yourself to the committee?
Honorable Chair, my name is Richie Dajman Badu, Acting Director, Budget and Management Accountant, NHIA.
Honorable Chair, my name is Rafael Segbep, Acting Deputy Chief Executive Administration in NHIA.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Dr. Victor Asari Bampu, Acting CEO.
Just to remind everybody, you are live on GTV, live on Facebook and so many other outlets. Now, National Health Insurance Authority, let's look at your financial performance in 2021 and 2022. Looking at it, your total income was down about 121 million. Why so? I mean, from, it was down to comparing 2021 and 2022.
Honorable Chair, thank you. Honorable Chair, basically, this was due to a reduction or decrease in the levies, which was about 100 million from between 2021 to 2022.
Why people were not paying?
That's the the National Health Insurance levies, the collections.
Ah, okay. Now let's let's look at your expenditure. Claims of service of service providers in 2022 went up by over 400 by 41 percent. How so?
Honorable Chair, this was due to the increase from our claims bill. That's about 500 million. It was due to increase in medicine list.
Now look at your ID cards and biometric expense. It went from 53.7 million to 84.8 million. Why that big jump?
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. This was due to our target increase of our of our membership, the registration of the total population of the nation.
But it looks like every time we register people, we never finish registering these people. What happens? Why?
Honorable Chair, we have to reach universal health coverage by 2030, so we have even limited time to get there.
So a surplus of 606 million in 2021 ended up being a deficit of 178 in 2022.
Honorable Chair, very well. As I said, our claims will increase by 500 million whilst the National Health Insurance levy is decreased by 100 million. So between those two bills, there was even a decrease in 400 million, a difference of 400 million.
And we're looking at your current ratio as of 2022. It's 1.9 to 1. And in the case of our 2021, it was 2.8 to 1. What has been the current trend now?
Honorable Chair, the current trend has improved because we have received more monies from controller. At that time, there was significant amount in receivables, that is IFRS.
So we should have hope in National Health Insurance Authority?
Honorable Chair, there is hope.
Good.
Chair, just to inform the House that at the moment, the National Health Insurance is doing prompt payment. So in fact, the allowable period for IFRS, the tradition or precedence is three months. But as I speak to you now, they pay almost every month. So if there's any outstanding for any service provider, then maybe the service provider hasn't brought their claims. So every month, we do payment and the Minister for Finance has also been very, very cooperative and helpful.
It is good, Honorable Minister, that you say that because NHIA, there was always an issue about non-payment. So sometimes you go to hospitals, they wouldn't take your card and everything else. All right. That's good. Now let's go to management issues. Let's hold on for a follow-up from Madame Abner Osasara.
Thank you very much. Please, let's go to your financial position. In a year where you claim they reduced your income, the incomes that came to you, we saw your non-current assets moving from 98 million in 2021 to 310 million. So I'm thinking that you're saying that not much was given to you in the form of levies and then you chose to spend on plants, buildings and. That's at least, that's what the the financial position here speaks to. Because in 2021, where you had 2.2 million, you spent just your your non-current assets was 98 million. And then in 2022, where you claimed you claim your income was reduced, you rather shut up your non-current assets at the expense of what, claims, payments or what?
Honorable Chair, thank you very much. This was due to the payments made on ongoing projects, ongoing projects that we completed in the year.
So it's not like you had money and you were able to use some to complete your project? So it wasn't like the incomes or the levies that came in was was not enough? Because you even had more to increase your non-current asset by over 200 percent. So when you are stating your finances, you usually state it in that terms that you, because you were here saying that you saw, we saw a loss, a deficit because your levies came down. Your levies came down, but your non-current assets shut up. So you just put your money where what? Your nose was. And I think in explaining, you just have to put that out there also so that you create a true and fair view of the accounts and proceedings as it's at the National Health Insurance. Thank you very much.
Well noted, Honorable Chair.
Now let's look at the management issues in this own paragraph 723 and Honorable Bauer will take care of that.
Thank you, Chairman. They said infraction relates to non-transfer of funds from SNEAT. And the auditors are saying your receivable amount of 564 million, NARAN 48,323, the three four Ghana cities was not, I could not be traced to any bank accounts of the National Health Insurance Fund as at the time of the audit. And if you go to 725, they are saying that the situation makes it difficult for the authority to meet its objectives as set out in section 40 of the Act that establishes you, Act 852, and therefore recommended that there should be, maybe should reconcile with the Controller General and the Counter General to reconcile all the transfers and recover the outstanding amount. Can you walk us through as to whether you've been able to recover this receivable that we are supposed to receive from the SNEAT?
Honorable Chair, SNEAT has paid all the amount and this has been confirmed by the Auditor General's office.
Auditor General, can you confirm?
Honorable Chair, the entire amount has been paid by SNEAT. Thank you.
I think that should be all. But let me also commend the leadership of NHIA for the human job that we are doing. Now we no longer have the calls from our clients that I've been to the hospital, they are saying my NHIA card is not working and I need to go and buy drugs again. So Dr. Bumpo and your team, a pat on your back and then we plead that at least you continue with the good work that you are doing in line with the reset agenda of President Domodra Manu Hamer.
We thank you very much, Honorable Chair.
Minister, this is a public interest question. And, oh, Minister, this time you are wrong because it's, you don't, you don't know what I'm going to ask. My my issue has to do with, you know, the medicine list, the medicines list. How does a drug get onto it? Do you look at diseases and illness that are common and prevalent in our communities before you put them there? Because two days ago, Minister, you came to Parliament to answer a question on the hepatitis B issue. You hardly find it. We know vaccines should be relatively cheaper to 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 buy, but that particular hepatitis B vaccine, prevention vaccine, vaccine, I think it's around 1,000 or 1,002, but it shouldn't be. And it's because I believe it is not on the list. So I'm asking, how does a drug get onto the medicines list? And if and there are certain drugs that many Ghanaians feel will have to be on the list and are not on the list, what is the process that we have to go through to get those drugs on the medicines list?
Honorable Chair, this is a very important question. The Ministry of Health sets up a group that considers the current disease trends and the kind of drugs that must come onto the list. And we are all stakeholders of that group. And that brings up the standard treatment guidelines. And I'm saying it's important because yesterday we had a stakeholders conference where NHIA brought together all the stakeholders and exactly this same drug vaccine that you are talking about, it came up. So it's one of the things that we're going to be looking at to to put on the list.
And Minister, I also want to find, you know, there are certain diseases that are difficult to manage in terms of their medication. Is there a way we can get it on there at subsidized costs so that at least people going through those ailments and diseases can also get some?
Yeah.
Some relief?
Before I come to this question, the issue about the hepatitis B that came up on the floor were of two legs. One was about the vaccines and the other was about the treatment. And so the vaccines, I informed the House that plans are far in advance to include it in the traditional immunization. I informed the House. Then my attention was drawn to the fact that there are some medications that are used for the treatment are not on the National Health Insurance list. And so I assure the House that that will be considered and then I will, I will make sure we'll put it on the National Health Insurance list. But it must go through a process. It must be convincing. We must establish the need for it and all that. But I think it's a very important issue we need to, I mean, consider. Yeah.
Minister, finally, yesterday you held a press conference on the, Minister, I told you I'll be I'll be asking for better.
You didn't disappoint me at all.
Yes, Minister, I told you, I told you I'll be. Minister, and for me, my 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 issue has to do with the fact that the contract was for a certain number of networked hospitals or health centers. And you have, out of the 900 or 950, correct me please, 450 has been done. And the payments that you claim has been made, the total contract amount was 100 million is 77, did you say 77 or 76 has been paid? And you're saying that it is more than the work that has been done. Minister, have we taken steps to find out from the vendors, one, why they failed to scale it to the amounts that they have been paid? And two, you said now we are moving forward, we have a new vendor. And so is the new vendor going to clear the outstanding? Or that's the difference of the 450 less than 900, the 450 less than 900? That difference, is the vendor going to get them on board or the vendor is going to start, the new vendor is going to start all over? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. As you recall, I responded to this question on the floor of the House and paid the standing orders of the House. Under normal circumstances, I should not be repeating it on the on on this committee. But then I'll, Mr. Chairman, I will take the challenge and give the committee the explanation very well. So I will take the challenge up. Mr. Chairman, we inherited an electronic system that an agreement was signed in 2019. The contract sum was 100 million dollars. They were supposed to connect about 950 health facilities. The contract was supposed to expire three years later, so that will come to 2022. At the end of 2022, they had not connected all the 950. Some other reasons were given for the underperformance. Now, the government then extended the contract to expire in 2023, 2023. At the end of the 2023, again, not all the 950 facilities had been connected. The government again extended the contract to expire on the 31st December 2024. So something that originally was meant for three years has been extended to five years. Now, out of the 100 million dollars, about 77 million dollars has been paid. Now, when we came, under normal circumstances, the contract was divided into what we call milestones. So when milestone one is completed, it must be given to the state before you even go to milestone two. And that was what the ministry or government should have insisted on before even allowing the next milestone. And that was not done. And so when we took over, when the contract had expired, so issues of abrogation or termination doesn't arise because there was no contract. It doesn't arise because there was no contract. Now what we said was that before we take over, we must know what we are inheriting. And so a forensic audit was conducted and we saw a lot of gaps, especially the hardware. You realize that issues of quantity, issues of quality of materials provided were not up to specification. They quantify that and that was about 18 million dollars. There were other issues. Again, as part of the third milestone, they were supposed to connect about 157 facilities. And the government paid about 10 point something, almost 11 million dollars. That again shouldn't have been the case because, no, no, it's part of the 77, because it is not meant for pre-finance. You execute the contract and you pay, but the government at the time paid. So out of the 157 health facilities that must be connected, only seven were verified. Seven were verified. And so today, it will interest you to know, the immediate past Health Minister clearly admitted in his post, I mean, his right absence and circulating that the contract, I mean, the contract has been overpaid. I'm not saying it. And so when we came, we said, wait a minute, now there are gaps. I invited him to the ministry to have a conversation with him because under normal circumstances, we should have access to the data. And, Mr. Chairman, in all this, what is very important and sensitive is not even about the gaps or the money issue, has to do with our data and access to our service. National security is a national security issue. So what we said was that you should have handed over to the state. Now, the state doesn't have access to our data and our service. And so we are ready because the software doesn't belong to the state. It's its property and that's another sensitive issue to deal with. And so no problem, we sign what we call service. And so no problem, we sign what we call service maintenance agreement with you for two years. So that we will not experience the disruptions we are experiencing at the moment. When we got the data, but before we do that, give us access to our data, give us our service. The, the contractor or the vendor insisted that if we don't take issues of, uh, data out of the contract, he was not going to sign. Yes, and, Mr. Chairman, at this point, let me put my CEO for National Health Insurance on the spot. He was one of the people who led this negotiation. I didn't seek his permission to put his name out. That's why I'm saying I'm putting him on the spot. He was one of the people who led this negotiation. Because at a point in time, I had used all diplomacy, so I had to stay back in the interest of the country. That's why you don't want to know the other tangentials. But I had to stay back to push some of my CEOs. Mr. Chairman, for your information, we were not dealing with a reasonable human being. And so he said we should take that one out. And again, instead of us verifying four hundred and fifty health facilities, he says, no way, put in four hundred and sixty-one. Yes, that's why I have cited a witness. He said, we can't do this. In all this, we were engaging him. But what we realized was that the country was virtually begging him and switching the thing on and off because we had no solution. At that point, I had to take a bold and courageous decision to find a solution. And what is the solution? The solution is that the country must own the software. And even if the country was not owning the software and we had created a middleware, an exchange, where any vendor would plug in, even if any vendor is bluffing, who could have secured our data, we didn't have that. And so for the past two weeks, Mr. Chairman, the whole system has been switched off. And that is why you hear issues of National Health Insurance card were not being verified. The Chairman, you hear issues of we are going back to the paper system and all that. So, Mr. Chairman, what I think is important and Ghanaians must know, and, Mr. Chairman, we didn't respond to all these things because we thought that it was not for the ministry or the minister to come and lament. We should have solutions. The Chairman, we had no option than to engage and to have a software that is for the state. So we are working on the software that is for the state, which is now, instead of the LEMS, which is the Lightwave Health Information Management System, we are working on Ghana Health, I mean, Information Management System that the state owe. Now, we have put in place the middleware that even if we're inviting more vendors, they will come and plug into the system and that the data will be lodged into it. Now, the second leg of your question about the vendor, the five hundred, because he has not had the five hundred. And one of the issues why we are where we are is that the system was monopolized. If there were about four or three or two vendors, maybe if he's maybe squeezing our boss at this point, they are just may not. And so going forward, the decision is that the five hundred, they are going to open up. But we have to deal with this emergency situation. So what we have done is that we are rolling out the software, we have a four-week plan, we have done the, we are doing the piloting. All other agencies are on board, medical superintendents, I mean, uh, medical superintendents are on board. CEOs of the various agencies who are interested parties are on board. AG on board, Yoko on board, um, Nita on board, all at a cyber, everybody is on board. Where we have to retrieve what belongs to the state, the appropriate agencies will deal with that. For now, the ministry's target aim is to look at how we can get out of this, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Minister, you see the platform I gave initially, you were reluctant to respond. But you see, this platform is for free. You are not paying any money, you are not paying for any item thirteen because, I mean, it is here and we are taking care of all that. Yes.
You know you are a cabinet.
No, I.
And I'm cabinet. You are a cabinet.
My Minister, there's, there's, there's one thing I, I, you, you, you mentioned that the minister said, the former minister said, uh, the vendor has been overpaid and it's in, uh.
I have a, a write-up. Seth, if you are here and you are listening to me, please give me my file. Mr. Chairman, today I woke up to a response from the immediate past, um, minister. And Seth, are you here? I woke up to a response from the immediate past. And if anything, I told you, you should be keeping quiet. It's not his interest to be talking because he overpaid the contractor.
Uh, Minister, um, respectfully, if you can go through.
So I read.
Yes, because he's not here.
This is one of the things he said. He said that payment have been sixty-two percent from the Ministry of Finance and sixty-eight percent from the National Health Insurance Authority totaling seventy-six point nine-nine million paid. So he has admitted that about seventy-seven has been paid. And twenty-three million dollars outstanding. Now, hear this, as of December twenty twenty-four, reconciliation showed an unutilized advance of ten point six million yet to be expended by the vendor. And he is the one who paid this. Why should you be talking?
So, my Minister, well, this does not translate into the person being overpaid. I, I thought you said the person put it out there that, uh, he said an advance has been given, but it hasn't been utilized.
No, Madame, Madame, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This is not a pre-payment procedure. So you pay as and when you have executed the job. So if you are paid more than the work you have done, you have been overpaid.
And you said the minister said that.
Yes, yes.
For me, that is what I want to establish. The former minister said that the vendor has been overpaid.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so the impression should not be created as though saying this doesn't mean overpayment. That's number one. That impression should not be created. And then maybe you should come out to say he didn't write this, but this is what he has written.
Uh, since this has, since this has come up at a Public Accounts Committee meeting, uh, which is live everywhere. Minister, if you could give us a copy of that so that it be part of our files. Of the copy of the, the minister's.
Okay, okay.
Send her a copy, yeah, the document that you read from.
No problem, I can staple them together.
You give, uh, you give us a copy.
It's been titled, what's the title?
That would be in our files. You, you can get it later and give it to our clerk.
Okay, so it's been titled, The LEMS Controversy, A Case of Giving the Bad, uh, the Dog a Bad Name to Hang It.
Yes, so when we get a copy.
No problem, no problem.
Okay.
And it's signed by?
No, no, I didn't say it's signed. I said this is what he has put out there.
And it's in the name of the, you know, you mentioned that it's in the name of the immediate past minister, that's why I.
Yes, 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 so, um.
It has that indication on, on the document.
Yes, it has that indication on there. It says, a former minister for health, Dr. Okubwe writes.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
And it's all over social media. I mean, Ghanaians listening to me, no, I mean.
I haven't seen it, but, um, we'll be happy to have a copy of it.
You are the only person who have not seen it. You are the only person who have not seen it.
Uh, Minister, I, 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 I beg your pardon, that, that is not the case. I'm sure there are quite a number of us here who have not seen it. But I'll be happy to have a look at it and then, and then we can, we can, we can take that.
Minister. Minister, uh, thank you for the explanation. Honorable Cabinet Akando, thank you for the explanation. And as you rightly pointed out, you saw this in on the internet. It could be the case that it wasn't written by the immediate past minister. So I will plead that we, we disregard that until we can authenticate, uh, that it's coming from, uh, the immediate past minister. Number two.
Honorable member, that's why I said we need a copy to be on our files.
Yeah, I wanted, I wanted to, I wanted to place emphasis on it for everybody to know that. It's just, he saw it, uh, Okubwe writes.
Mr. Chairman.
It could be anybody's decision.
I said so, I didn't hide it from the committee. It's exactly what I said.
That was, it's very good, but my point is that you shouldn't, you shouldn't have made, you shouldn't have made another comment on that. We, we heard you.
Mr. Chairman, you know, you say it's a public interest matter.
No, we heard you right. So you, for you to have said, you shouldn't have done it. You went extra much to have said that you shouldn't have done it.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't intend this banter.
No, no.
I put it on record, that I was not even going to.
Okay, Minister, that's fine, that's fine. You said what you said, Ghanaians are listening, so we heard what you said, so let, let's move on. So let's move on, please. The second one is, you said you've gotten another contractor to do, to continue the project. Did I hear you right, please?
Mr. Chairman, unfortunately, I didn't expect this, um. If, if, if I was going to do this, probably you would have, I mean, you would have, um, informed me in advance to bring the necessary documentations. And I thought that I was going to take the opportunity to explain to you what really has happened. So, Mr. Chairman, I, I, with a greatness of respect, where I have gotten to, if you indulge me, I think we will leave it here.
Yes. Honorable Minister, no, that's a, it's a question you can answer. You asked him if he has another contractor or not, right?
On the project.
On the project?
Yes. I, I'm hearing saying something like.
Mr. Chairman, I go, you've gotten some Ghana, something, something. Unless you want to retract whatever he said, then I will also take my question back.
Ask him a question.
Yeah, he hasn't answered.
Okay, he will answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if you need any better and detailed particulars on this matter, I can assure you, you can invite him at any time and I'll appear.
Thank you, so that's his answer.
Chairman, sorry, please. Is this a case that, is this a case that he's retracting whatever he said?
No, 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 no. No, this is live, we all know it. He says if you want better and further particulars on the contractor or whatever is going on, he's, he's ready to give it to us.
Thank you very much. The reason why I ask this question is the fact that he, please, please, Honorable Akando, please, Honorable, please, Honorable, please, please, I know. He spoke about the fact that the contract, the first one, wasn't done properly, if you like, among other things. So I wanted to make sure that this one is entered into, was done the proper way, so that we will not go back to the same problem again.
Uh, that wouldn't be the, uh, for Public Accounts Committee to find out whether he did it right or wrong. What we are asking for, no, no. He said, look, he said, he said, the minister said, if we want further information on it, he will provide it. And after he's provided that, then we'll see whether he did it right or wrong. Isn't that so? All right, Honorable Gappe.
Uh, Minister, Mr. Rankin is here saying after what, uh, we will ask for you to provide, but it's just a word of caution. That as you said, you needed to get a vendor to fill, to bring about solutions to the issues you were facing. Please take note that is today, it's immediate, you needed to do something. When COVID came in twenty twenty, we needed to do something quickly. At that time, everybody saw the urgency, the need to sort of cut short some steps and then get to solutions. Today, it may be the same thing, but I'm only urging you to be very cautious. Because today, we understand, we are in it, we need that data because what is the use if you can't have your previous history when a doctor needs to take care of you? But tomorrow, after the problem or the solution has been found, nobody will remember that it was urgent. And so you needed to do some things to cut short certain processes in the procurement chain. So this is just an advice to you because I have seen some before. In the COVID era, we needed to cut short certain steps to provide net needed, uh, essentials to our citizens. So, and it's the same, it's a similar thing because I can imagine patients going to the hospital without their history and it's, it's, it will be frustrating to them and even to the doctors who are taking care of them. So this is just a cautious, uh, 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 message to you that in you coming out with processes and solutions, sorry, to solve this particular problem, let's look at the processes so that one, two years later, you don't have to appear here saying that, um, um, you've been cited for a breach in the procurement process or any other thing that warrants the ministry and to be called before, uh, Public Accounts. This is just, um, a, a note of caution to you.
This is a fantastic advice and I appreciate it so much and I will be religiously be guided by that. But, Mr. Chairman, just to add, it was not in anybody's interest to even, some of these is our national security sensitive. Not in anybody's interest to even put some of these issues out there. Mr. Chairman, when you go to a ministry and you are solving problems and stories are being planted in the media as though you are creating the problems, if you decide to keep quiet, you dig your own grave. So some of these explanations are sometimes needed for Ghanaians to understand what you have inherited and how you are solving the situation. It is not, I mean, the story has been planted for a very long time, we just came out two, three days ago. And so I thank the honorable member so much for her fantastic advice.
All right, Honorable Gappe has a question.
Minister, thank you very much, being courageous and being factual. And then fact is fact, and then you brief the committee on better and further particulars. Thank you very much. Uh, this is a public interest question. Uh, health insurance vis-à-vis your ministry, there are services they are providing, but patients are still paying. For instance, like pregnant women, but by free maternal care. And it is happening all over the country, especially when you look at Joy FM documentation on pay or die. It is evidence, thirty-seven Collebu teaching hospitals, and then their patients are still paying for services that are supposed to be free. I would like to ask you, what strategy or steps are you taking to address this for Madagana?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, when you are put in a public office, you identify challenges and your responsibility is to face the challenges. When we took office as a government, some of the challenges facing National Health Insurance, one, was the delay in payment. Two, the car pain. Three, unrealistic, I mean, payment of tariffs. And then the fourth one is what they call, they've given it a very nice name, but it's not a nice thing, copayment. And so when we took office, we've taken our time to be taking the problems one after the other. Now, new tariffs have been developed, now the oncarping has been done, now we have prompt releases. What is left, and I must be very, very honest with the committee, is the issue of copayment. Where in some cases, when you go to, uh, some facilities, although you have the National Health Insurance card, some of the facilities will be asking you to pay more. We have not completely dealt with that, but plans are far in advance, we have stakeholders engagement, it has come up strongly. And so I will allow the CEO to throw light on the strategies we are adopting, what we are doing at the moment to deal with the issue of copayment. CEO.
Thank you, uh, Chair, and thank you, Honorable Minister. So as Honorable Minister said, there were a few issues that were bringing this up, the irregular payments, which now we are paying monthly. The service and medicines tariffs have been reviewed. The medicines tariffs are now realistic and have been in place since March this year. The service tariffs will be implemented in a few months after Honorable Minister and the board approve it. The third one is that even despite us doing this, as the, um, what has been mentioned, some of the facilities have people who still collect monies and they, they call it, uh, copayment or top-ups. We've set up a committee to deal with this and we have a strict sanctions regime. So once we are also doing our part, paying regularly and paying realistically, as soon as we realize that these facilities are collecting monies which they term copayments, which are illegal payments, we will apply those sanctions that are in our law. And it could include getting them off this scheme, which is a very important scheme. So we want to actually also name and shame, for example, I want to put it on record that Goso Hospital, they have clearly stated that they will not allow top-ups and they are implementing that. So we are encouraging the hospitals, and there are quite a number of them, we are encouraging the hospitals that have put this in place and we will sanction those that are doing the wrong thing. Thank you, Chair.
Please, what is top-ups in the, in the hospitals?
So it's the same as, they have different names, so it's the same as the copayment and the illegal payments.
You, you, you mentioned copayments as if it is legal, so that's, I, I like the way you said illegal payments. They also, you don't even call it copayments, illegal payments, because you are not supposed to pay if you have, um, a working insurance guy, right?
So, Mr. Chairman, um, let me use this, your platform and this opportunity to commend the Goso, um, District Hospital highly.
This is free.
It's free, so, let me use this opportunity to commend Goso District Hospital highly for the strategies they've put in place to make sure that copayment is not happening and to assure the committee and the whole country that we are coming after the facilities who are tolerating copayment in their facilities. So when it gets, when it gets there, you shouldn't be, Akando, no, no, thank you.
Yeah, so Minister, thank you very much. Based on what Goso. Yeah, so, Minister, thank you very much. Based on what Goso Hospital is doing, I think, uh, other hospitals, it's a, it's a role model. So, you need to, you know, go beyond the recommendation and do something, uh, nice for them, to project them as the best practices for the country. And then, and also to the National Health Insurance Boss, apply the rule, enforcement of, uh, rules and the laws is killing this country. And I will applaud you to enforce the, the, the law strictly. And then, so that at the end of the day, it serve as a deterrent from Madagana, because the lot is being wasted in the system. Thank you.
Minister, University Gaven Hospitals waiting for you, as well as the hundred-bed, uh, district hospitals in the name. We are in your hands. You understand what I, what I mean?
Very well, Mr. Chairman.
Hey, you know how it is, everybody knows how to do your job, so they get there, then they ask for the front door. Where is the front door? Okay, NHIA, you are discharged. Now, let's go to Ghana College of Physicians and Surgeons. Did they show up, uh, Ghana College of Physicians and Surgeons? Are they here?
Yes.
Oh, all right. Uh, could you please introduce yourself to the committee, please?
Mr. Chair, I am Simon Peter Komet, the Head of Accounts of the College.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is Richard Adanu. I'm the Director of the Ghana College of Physicians and Surgeons.
Thank you very much. Um, your financials is on paragraph seven twenty-eight, and Honorable Frankie Abou will take care of that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ghana College of Physicians and Surgeons, I've gone through your accounts. And in my opinion, you're not doing badly at all. I just want to request that you take one twenty seconds to explain to the committee what you do and your mandate to do what you do. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the Ghana College of Physicians and Surgeons is the national body for providing postgraduate medical education for doctors. So, we are mandated to provide specialization courses for doctors, also to provide continuous professional development courses for doctors, to contribute to policy, that, um, public health policy that's led by the Ministry of Health, and also to, um, promote research in medical and surgical disciplines in the, in the country. So, that is what our mandate is. And we do that by, um, conducting exams for doctors after they finish their house job. They do an initial exam that we call the primary examination. After they pass the primary examination, we have panels from the different specialties that interview these successful doctors. Then, we place these doctors in hospitals where they, they do their training. And at the end of their, there are two levels of the training. The first one is a three-year training. In one specialty, regiologist, four years. After the initial training, they do their exams, we conduct those exams. Then, they do the advanced specialist training, that is, um, about, let's say, two to four years. And then, after that, we also do, do the exam for them to come out as, um, advanced specialists in the, in the area. So, um, what we are looking at now is trying to spread this specialization training all over the country, because we don't have all hospitals in the country providing the specialization training. So, unfortunately, doctors in certain parts of the country, when they are admitted to specialization, they have to leave their regions, leave their regions and go to the hospitals where, where the program exists. And they stay there for a number of years. And when a doctor has relocated, especially with their family, and they are in a new location for about three, four years, when the training ends and you say, go back, sometimes it's very disruptive and all that affects health service delivery. So, we are working hard, despite the challenges that we face, to try to get the specialization training spread all over the country. I've done more than one twenty seconds, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'm glad Minister has just ride beside you. So, it's very good. Um...
Okay, M- 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 Mr. Chairman, just to also add, that, just as the Director indicated, at the moment, the training is centralized in Accra. But fortunately enough, we are, we are, we have secured some kind of funding and that is going to be taken from the Ghana Medical Trust Fund, the Mahama Cares. So, you know, the Mahama Cares is dedicated to us, the funding of non-communicable diseases. So, we have, we are in touch with the college. The college has indicated that there's a huge gap about specialists treating that particular disease. And so, as part of the act, it is one of the mandate of the Ghana Medical Trust Fund to fund the Ghana College of Physicians, to be able to train more specialists. And so, this next year, we are going to, I mean, spread them to Wah, uh, Hohoi, and then, uh, Boko, right?
Bogga.
Bogga. So, we are going to start with these three, I mean, regions, and then we will roll it on and on and on. Thank you very much.
Mister, um, Wah, Bogga, Hohoi, the, the, the middle belt is missing.
Minister?
Um, Honorable Chair, the, currently, we do have programs going on in the Ashanti region also. At Konfanochi is a big training center. We have, um, as part of our expansion, we, we have got, um, programs going on at the Holy Family Hospital in Tichiman, and then also at Eastern Regional Hospital in Kofuridua, in addition to Coliboo and a number of other hospitals in Accra. So, we have been working on this gradually, but then we've been kind of like affected by availability of funds. And that's what the Honorable Minister is saying, that with this new stream of funds from the Mahama Cares Trust, it would help us to get training going. There's training going in Cape Coast also. So, up north, it was only Tamale that was doing the training. That's why we are looking at that. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, I just, one question for you. I just, um, I'm seeing non-tax revenue. Is it the IGF?
Mr. Chair, that is correct.
I think that, um, you're, you made the profit of, or surplus of three point three million in twenty twenty-two, but that increased to thirty million in twenty twenty-three, representing two nine four point eight percent, which is very good. I don't think I have much to say. Your current ratio from seven point three to one in twenty twenty-two to eight point three to one, which is also very good. You able to meet your current, uh, financial obligations. The only last question I want to ask is the increase in your current assets. And, uh, the explanation is that there's an increase in receivables. So, what is the component of your receivables?
Mr. Chair, the receivables is, uh, to do with the tuition fees, the tuition fees, which is outstanding.
So, tuition fees, is it paid by the doctors themselves or from somewhere?
So, the, um, the, the tuition fees for the doctors is supposed to be paid by the government. And, um, the arrangement that we have is that those tuition fees should be paid through the Ghana Scholarship Secretariat.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm done. Thank you.
I think you, you've answered the, uh, the next management question. You were cited for uncollected tuition fees, but then if it's supposed to be paid by the government and the government hasn't paid, uh, this one, you don't have control over it. So, Minister, um, please, uh, if you work with your colleague, Minister of Finance, to release monies to the Scholarship Secretariat, then they can also, uh, give money to them to clear this infraction. As for this infraction, it cannot be, it, it will not be possible for them to clear it on their own. So, respectfully, assist them.
Chief, I, I see you were part of our meeting yesterday. Yesterday, when we were having, ah...
I was, I was with you in the spirit.
Why are you being invited? I thought that they would even be invited with the Secretary, uh, Scholarship Secretary. So, they rather will come and tell us that, why haven't you paid that money? By me, who is supposed to take the money to come and answer why they have not given me the money? So, I agree with you entirely.
Uh, Honorable Minister, um, no, Ghana College of Physicians and Surgeons, you are discharged. And Honorable Minister, you are also discharged. Thank you very much for coming.
Minister, thank you. And you have to thank us for giving you this platform to also articulate your policies. It's very important.
Thank you very much for giving me the platform.
Now, let's call Ministry of Works and Housing. Commission, those of you are going to answer questions, could you all, uh, get ready to be, uh, to take the oath? And Clark, administer the oath, please.
Aye.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
Swear of me God.
Swear of me God.
Okay, now we'll start with, um, uh, State Housing Company. And Honorable Minister, introduce yourself and then your delegation.
Sorry, we didn't hear that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madame Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair and, uh, honorable colleagues. Good morning again. My name is Honorable Gizalatete Agbuthi, Member of Parliament, Fravutu Senya West, and Deputy Minister Works and Housing. I'm standing in for my minister, Honorable Kenneth Gilberte J. Thank you.
Good morning to you all. Reverend Stewie, I'll say to the director of the ministry.
Good morning, Madame Chair. My name is Philip Ake. I'm Director of Finance, uh, Works and Housing.
Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Bauer. I'm the Managing Director for State Housing Company.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. My name is William Kalachi. I'm the Head of Finance for State Housing Company.
All right, um, the paragraph we are going to is on paragraph thirteen fifty-three, and Honorable Abenaw Sehassare will hand it that place.
Should I pass it on to you? Because, um, John and I were primary school classmates and...
Wow.
Yes.
And, and you know Reverend also?
Reverend I knew from the ministry.
Okay.
And then, John and I, primary school classmates. But, uh, John, I don't think I have much to say about your account. Your accounts are good and your current ratio is, um, is good. There was an improvement from, um, twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three in terms of your, your turnover and your expenses and everything. I think they are within the levels. I just want you to share with Ghanaians what your mandate is and, um, moving forward, what you, um, how you hope to support your ministry to sort of close the housing gap that we have in this country.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, the State Housing Company Limited was originally set up around nineteen sixty-seven as the development arm for the government. So, mainly, they were tasked with, uh, building residential and sometimes office accommodation for government workers, public servants, civil servants and the like. Over the years, the organization morphed into first a corporation and then eventually into a limited liability company around nineteen ninety-seven. Um, actually nineteen ninety-six, just to be correct. Our core mandate, as it stands today, is to be able to provide affordable and sustainable housing to the majority of Ghanaians in areas that give them a sense of pride of place. So, that's basically what we do. Um, our mandate also includes managing the, a section of lands that were composurally, uh, acquired by government and placed in our care. Uh, so, we provide those estate management services. So, for most, uh, Ghanaians who own or have leased government lands, their leases and tenancy is managed by State Housing Company Limited. Um, in support of the ministry's objectives, uh, we are one of the development arms under the ministry, so TDC being one. And from the technical side, our colleagues at AESL and the other agencies support the ministry in terms of delivering as many housing units as possible. Um, it is important to put on record that State Housing, however, is not a subvented organization. Uh, a lot of, all of our activities are financed internally through intelligent generated funds. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, when is the next affordable housing, uh, coming on, so that Ghanaians listening, uh, will know when to, uh, come to your house rates for? Uh, yeah, yes.
So, we currently have a number of ongoing projects. Um, the affordability debate is, uh, is arguable. However, we are working under the ministry. The ministry has quite a lot of significant, major housing projects, some of which form part of the Big Push, uh, agenda, which are coming on stream soon. And we are one of the lead agencies in executing that. In fact, um, I'm sure Madame, uh, Honorable Minister will speak to the district housing scheme, which is being piloted in the next month or so. And State Housing is one of the agencies delivering those houses. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, uh, State Housing Company, you are discharged.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
May we have AESL, please? Um, AESL, could you introduce yourself to the committee, please?
Ah, okay. So my name is, uh, Sovia Gordon Tanga, the Acting Managing Director for the company.
My name is Architect Nakwa Ali Kwati. I am the Deputy Managing Director of AESL.
I'm Alajibrahim Gibral, Acting Head of Finance.
I'm Setu Forulabi, representing the Eastern Auditors.
I'm George Quashi, representing the Audit Committee, AESL.
My name is Abdul Latif, accountant, AESL.
Honorable Frankie Abua will go through the financials with you.
Thank you, Chairman. Architectural and Engineering Services Limited, AESL. I've gone, I've gone through your financials. I've not really seen any much problem. Except to say that we don't, Ghanaians don't really know your mandate and what you do. So in less than one twenty seconds, can you walk us through what your mandate is and what you do? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. So the Architectural and Engineering Services Limited, uh, was carved out of what was then known as the Public Works Department in nineteen seventy-three. And the mandate of the company at the time was, which was actually called a corporation, was to provide consultancy services on government projects, uh, for various ministries, departments and agencies across the country. Uh, that mandate remained until nineteen ninety-three when we were converted into a limited liability company. What that meant then was that, uh, we were no longer, uh, the various, the various ministries, departments and agencies were no longer obliged, uh, to necessarily engage AESL to carry out any consultancy services. Uh, so we're then competing with other consultants, uh, in the industry. Uh, what that also meant then was we became, uh, a purely commercial entity, uh, which meant that, uh, we could be sued and, and then we could also, uh, sue people who were owing us, uh, for any services, uh, that, uh, we provided and, and payments were not coming. Uh, so, uh, we still provide the same service that we used to provide in the seventies, uh, but this time we compete with the private sector for, uh, for jobs.
Thank you. Your one twenty second is up, so that's fine.
Thank you.
I, in that case, since you are now a limited liability company, where I'm seeing an increase or a decrease in your revenue? So this revenue, is it generated by your own or where, or you get funding from the government?
Honorable Chair, we generate it on our own. We don't get funding from government.
That's very good. So I'm seeing aside the revenue, twenty-one million, I'm seeing other income. Where is that one coming from?
Honorable Chair, uh, we have rent income, that we have some spaces we rent out.
Your rent income went from one million in twenty twenty-two to two hundred and seventy-six in twenty twenty-three. What happened?
Honorable Chair, we, we have other source of, uh, income apart from the rent income.
Yeah, I, I wanted the component of the other income and you said rent income is included. And our chairman is asking you that. In twenty twenty-two, you had other income of more than a million, but in twenty twenty-three, it came down to two hundred and seventy-six thousand. And he's asking why? Is it a case that the people are no longer renting?
No, they are renting. In fact, we have rent income, it moves to, uh, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-four. The other component of other income, rent, interest, we have certificate fees and contract fees too we also get and then sometimes disposal. The component of the rent actually even dropped due to non-payment from some of our tenants.
Don't let us go there. Let's see it like that. Don't let us go there. It's fine. Um, so you turn a loss situation of one million in twenty twenty-two to a profit of five hundred and sixty-five thousand, representing one hundred and fifty-four percent. That is very good. And let's move to your financial position. The current ratio has improved. It moved from one point three, one point three to one, to one point four to one, which implies that you will be able to meet your, your current financial obligations. So I don't think, Chairman, I don't think I have much to say. It's okay.
AESL, um, finally, I have seen that, um, you have included toilet facilities in your classroom drawings. It's been how many years? Decades? Because, um, sometimes you get, um, a contract for, from Get Fund, Get Fund Awards, a quite, a contracts for maybe a district, a consultancy to build, uh, schools, classroom blocks. And previously, toilet facilities were not attached to them. So, um, moving forward, how can you make other public buildings, schools and those, um, buildings that you design, more exciting? Uh, moving away from the old structure, just one straight jacket thingy. The, the schools should look exciting. Uh, I don't know if you also do the hospital drawings and the other drawings. It, it should look a bit exciting than the flat, um, buildings we have. And I, I know you are responsible for, um, the drawings that we see of our public, most of our public buildings, especially our schools.
Madame, we've, we've, uh, Madame Chair, sorry. We've moved away from that long ago. I think, um, I don't know whether you have seen our current designs, but, um, we have moved away from what you are saying long, 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 long ago. We are now, um, um, when it comes to design, we are, we are, we are doing well. We are doing very well. We are competing well.
Madame, and just two, two years, two years ago, I mean, we awarded the, the same, this, this, that.
You know, design has to do, designs has to do with, you take into consideration costs. So sometimes, depending on how much you want to spend, that, um, um, influences the design in a way. So it depends, the government, how much the government is ready to spend. So we consider all those things and depending on how much your budget is, it will influence the kind of design that.
Yes, but, um, madam, if we have to build for, for, I wouldn't say eternity, but for a long time, we should not just look at the cost only, but the conducive-ness. And, uh, you know, you, you know what I mean? I mean, the, I'm not saying we should compete with the private schools in terms of buildings. But then we should do it such that when you see the building, you really would want to go in there and study. But some of your drawings, I mean, a year or two ago, you go to, we all know the, the schools, the public schools in some of our constituencies, the buildings, for lack of a better word, I'll say, they are very flat. So I'm happy you're saying you are moving away from that. And I'm also happy that these days you are including toilets as part of the, the school building facilities.
Thank you, Madame Chair. We'll consider everything you have said here.
Uh, Madame Chair, Mr. Chairman, sorry. Just to add something to AESL's mandate, that they are present in all sixteen regions. So, um, and the technical services are available also in that same way. So they are the, one of the few organizations whereby they have a presence nationwide. So I'm just putting this out there to the general public that their services are available. And, um, they range from architectural to engineering. Engineering is not just one engineering. It is a range of engineering, um, uh, specialties. Civil engineering, structural engineering, electrical engineering, mechanical engineering, geodetic engineering. There's a whole range of them and then quantity surveying services. The quantity surveyors are the, are like the accountants of the construction industry. And AESL also has a lot of that. So they are nationwide. So we are doing this so that their books will also look better in the coming years and be able to get more services and more work to do and better payments. And then just to add, I concur, being in this built environment space as well, I agree that, um, I think AESL, maybe soon they'll start coming out with various catalogs of their designs, twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, just as, you know, the fashion industry does. I think the architectural space should also do the same. I agree. Thank you.
All right, AESL, you are discharged. Now let's have Water Resources Commission.
Thank you, Chairman.
Have you guys taken the oath? Okay, could you please introduce yourself to the committee?
My name is Dr. Mahuli Lumo, the Head of Policy Plan and Water Resources Commission.
I'm Kakarichum, uh, Principal Accountant.
Okay, uh, Ghana, uh, min, Water Resources Commission. I'm going to, uh, let's look at the financial performance of your area. So far you are doing well. Uh, what is, what constitutes other revenue?
These are donor funds that we receive from our donor partners.
It's what?
Donor funds.
The donor funds?
Yes, sir.
And why did it increase so much from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three?
Okay, we submitted proposal to our donors, seeking funds to help us undertake a series of, uh, engagements with stakeholders and traditional authorities.
Well, maybe you need to send more proposals because a difference of three point five million cities, that was, uh, quite, uh, quite a lot. Um, now, after your revenue, now let's look at the expenditure. What cons, what, what, uh, caused administrative expenses to more than double?
Uh, one of the reason is due to the Akosombo village. So we had to do a lot of groundwater and surface water monitoring. And also we have to do a lot of lab testing.
Uh, let's see. Because of the spillage?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And also due to the increase in the donor funds, we're able to undertake a lot of donor activities.
Okay. So now let's look at the financial position. Uh, twenty twenty-two is three point seven one and then, uh, there is a current ratio. And twenty twenty-three, uh, went to two point five to one. Um, what was the, the current assets? You see how much it jumped? Hundred and fifty-six percent. Why so?
Okay. The increase was due to the introduction of our new ally. Uh, we had, uh, reintroduced our new ally, that's the dam safety ally. And it was introduced as part of our fees and charges. So we're able to generate more funds from that ally also.
So regulations help? Hmm, okay. Now, you have, um, you have a management issue of unqualified suppliers. Fifty-seven thousand. What, what happened?
Uh, Honorable Chair, um, this happened as a result of, um, our substantive procurement officer going on maternity leave. There are suppliers that we've been dealing with previously. And so, um, the one who took over felt they already have the documentation for pre, um, qualification. But we have then noted that and tried to introduce more measures to control the process now.
Now, these suppliers, accessory, they did not submit the mandatory documents such as GRE, task clearance and snit. Okay, I see that. Have you now submitted these?
They are now on GANF, so we've, uh, managed to put them on GANF now.
On what?
Uh, uh, Ghana, uh, Electronic Procurement System.
Okay, so you've corrected this anomaly?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
Auditors, have they, can you, uh, verify, please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, verification indicates that, um, these suppliers are now on GANF and they are dealing with, um, suppliers that are listed on the procurement electronic system.
All right, go and say no more on this one. Um, Water Resources Commission, you are discharged. And honorable minister, you are discharged also. I'm sorry, Community Water. Yes. Under the ministry. Uh, I'm sorry, please introduce yourself to the committee.
My name is Vincent Sanamkuagno, Acting Chief Director.
My name is Patrick Kofi Quenin, Acting Director of Finance.
Um, auditors, community water. You see, there was an issue about community water, whether there on Monday. Is it under local government or water resources?
Wexhamhausen.
It's under Wexhamhausen?
Yes, so the, the issues are in the M D A's report, the water systems.
M D A's?
M D A's, not the.
Oh, M D A's report, okay, all right. Okay, so Asante Region, where we have the Kuku full water system, is that under you? And what is it, who, who is it under?
Honorable Chair, that one falls under the District Assembly.
So local government?
Local government.
Ma- Madam Chair, I think, uh, there's a high time we make sure that at least we bring all the water facilities, especially those in the smaller communities, under the Community Water and Sanitation Agency. Otherwise, monitoring and tracking will become very difficult, very, very extremely difficult. So the few that are still left with the disassemblies, they should be put under the Community Water and Sanitation Agency.
Uh, just a minute, we'll resolve this issue easily. Because, uh, water, some of it is under local government, some of it under your ministry. So where does it stop? Where does it, uh, be end? So we'll just resolve, just give us about five minutes and we'll come right back. Water, um, Water and Sanitization, uh, Sanitation Agency. Uh, Western Region of Sankwa, is that under you? Okay, that one is under you. All right, then let's continue then. Uh, we have an issue of our uncollected revenue of hundred and thirteen thousand. What has happened to this amount?
Honorable Chair, as of December twenty twenty-four, the water system was able to retrieve an amount of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-three Ghana CDs.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that an amount of eighty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-three has been recovered.
What about the rest?
Honorable Chair, these are domestic subscribers and institutions. And with the domestic subscribers, we have been following up. We have a payment plan shadowed with them to collect. But with the institutions, it has to be paid through government, so we are still waiting on government for the payment.
How much of this, um, receivable is for domestic, uh, households and then those for institutions?
So for Asan Kwa, about sixty percent is for the institutions. And forty percent for the domestic that is outstanding.
Forty percent is on domestic?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the, the domestic ones, you have them on payment plan?
Yes, sir.
And, uh, the institutions you are waiting on the government? Hey, Abay.
This is unlike periods where it is specific. What government gives to you, you can use some, a part of it to defray the cost. So it's not like government will give you money specifically to pay this, but government makes budgetary allocations. And you have that, um, opportunity to use some to defray the cost, or that is not the case?
Honorable Chair, please, that is not the case. We have to make a follow-up to the, those various institutions to have the payments made to us.
Doesn't government, you said government pays on their behalf, didn't you just say that?
Exactly, but they pay through the institutions, they don't pay directly into our accounts. So we follow up with the institutions and we get the payments done.
But the institutions also receive their budgetary allocations. And for goods and services and some of these things, they, they consistently, every ministry, department and agency that appears before Parliament for their budgets, there's a portion for goods and services. And the goods and services are supposed to be used to pay for utilities as well. So to sit here and say we are waiting for government to bring money, this is not like scholarship secretaries where it is specific. So once they receive their budgetary allocations, they are supposed to use a part of it to pay for utilities. So this is not a simple message of I'm waiting for government. So respectfully, go after them. Because when, once you look into, once you look into their books, you see that government has given them money for goods and services, and they are supposed to use some to, to pay for these things.
Honorable Chair, well noted.
Now let's go to the other infraction, Tetchiman, uncollected fees of seventy thousand.
Honorable Chair, it is fully recovered.
Auditors, could you confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, the full amount has been recovered.
All right, what about, uh, Community Water and Sanitation of Waluwalu? That is under you also, right? An unrecovered debt of three hundred and forty-two thousand. What has happened to this amount?
Honorable Chair, the water system management has been able to recover an amount of eighty thousand four hundred and fifty-six Ghana CDs, thirty-three percent worth.
Now, what is, what about the rest of it?
It is the same issue of the schools that we supply water to. So we normally have to wait through the Free S H S Secretariat to make payment.
You don't have any households in here?
Okay. The percent, the percentage is here for Waluwalu.
Yeah.
Um, it's around forty, forty, forty-two percent.
What is that, households?
Institutions.
Institutions, but Free S H S just made a huge amount. I sent a, a lot of money to the, uh, schools. So they should pay for the water?
So this figure is as of December twenty twenty-four, so we'll follow up for the.
As of December twenty twenty-four?
Yes, sir. Yes, Honorable Chair.
It says, uh, fifty-eight institutions and individuals owe the agency a total of this amount. Management stated that they would develop the necessary strategies to collect all monies owed by customers in due course. What about, uh, Savalugu? They also owe ninety-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-six.
Honorable Chair, Savalugu is not under the management of Community Water and Sanitation Agency.
So who is it under? Uh, okay, Chief Director wants.
Honorable Chair, I want to make this clarification. We have over thousand two hundred, uh, money plus, uh, water systems in Ghana. Uh, almost thousand of them are under the District Assembly's management. We only have one ninety-eight that has been managed by the Community Water and Sanitation. So, under the new reforms, when it is done, then the C W S will take over all of them. I mean, Community Water, uh, manage, because now there's a confusion, so we are going through, uh, a process. Thank you very much.
Yes, and that's a problem that we are facing also. When the auditors come up with these audits, some of it is for Community Water, some of it is for local government. Local government comes in, no, that's not our problem, is, uh, Water and Sanitation Ministry. Then you two are telling us that they have about a thousand, you see, um, so you are working on this instead of Community Water will take over all of them?
Ye- yes, yes, Honorable.
Okay, but until that, what about Savalugu? Uh, oh yeah, we just spoke to Savalugu and he said it's not yours. What about Huidiam, um, I have a region, Huidiam Water Systems, is that under you?
Honorable Chair, yes, sir.
Uh, you owe, uh, the unrecovered debt is hundred eighty-six thousand.
Honorable Chair, as at December twenty twenty-four, an amount of ninety-eight thousand and forty CDs has been recovered.
Auditors, could you confirm this amount, please?
Yes, Honorable Chair, an amount of ninety, ninety-eight thousand and forty CDs has been recovered.
And I'm sure the story is the same.
Honorable Chair.
Okay, what about Gosu Water System, is that under you?
Honorable Chair, yes, it's under Community Water.
There's unrecovered debt of two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Honorable Chair, as at December twenty twenty-four, an amount of two zero seven thousand seven hundred and twenty-one point five one has been recovered.
Wow, you've done very well on that one. Uh, auditors, could you confirm, please?
Honorable Chair, we can confirm that.
Great, uh, what about Kukum Water System?
Honorable Chair, Kukum Water Systems has been able to recover an amount of forty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-three CDs, sixty percent worth.
What about the rest of it?
Payment plan schedule has been outlined for the collection of the outstanding receivables.
Okay, now what about Sankwa Community Water and Sanitation, that's under you, right?
Hon- Honorable Chair, that, that is right.
Okay, that one to unrecovered debt of four hundred and five thousand seven hundred and forty-five Ghana CDs.
Honorable Chair, the water system has been able to recover an amount of eighty thousand and twenty-four CDs, sixty-two percent worth.
Uh, this recovery rate over here is not impressive.
Honorable Chair, Kukum, uh, sorry, Sankwa has a very peculiar challenge. We have a peculiar challenge in Sankwa. Uh, when C W S took over the management of Kuku, uh, Sankwa Water System, there were debts owed the management at the time to this U T N. The customers claimed they have paid, but there were no receipts to support it. So we began the process of taking the officers who were managing the water system to charge, to provide, to pay back the money. Unfortunately, they won the organized tax. They went to our office in Asan, Sankwa and drove out our staff and took over the management of the water system as we speak. And, uh, the matter is with the police, it looked as if nobody is interested in helping. So we have also decided not to put our workers at risk there. And so that's the challenge in Sankwa currently.
Say, I have, I have always known you as an action man. So to say that you are not going back to Sankwa, uh, please.
Madam, Madam Chair, you know, the law that established Community Water was supposed to facilitate the provision of water for, uh, the D C assemblies and the community to manage. Over time, it was realized that because they did not have the technical competence, management and embezzlement and system left to rot became the order. And so in twenty seventeen, they began the process of taking over the system to manage. But we realized that most of these systems were owing huge amount of money to the, to electricity company. And even the management themselves, including some of the chiefs, were, were just squandering the money and leaving the assets to rot. So currently, like the Chief Director said, we are working on a law that would give access and power to us to manage the water system. That's the only way we can force, we can enforce these, uh, infringements. Uh, we hope that.
He will also support you.
Yeah, we hope that when it comes to Parliament, you will help us to get it.
Yes, we will also put it in our reports, I mean, draw Parliament's attention to it whilst we wait for the laws to also come in. But, um, it is very important that you take over and manage it and manage it efficiently, not just with, um, the revenue collection, but also with the protection of the assets as well. Thank you.
So the, the domestic, uh, those customers, six hundred and eighty-three of them, they owe three hundred and eighty-four thousand. those customers, six hundred and eighty three of them, they owe three hundred and eighty four thousand. Institutions have, there are nine of them, they owe fifteen thousand. And commercial is five, they owe six thousand. And if recovered eighty something thousand. Now, was that from the domestic people or from? Most of it must be from the domestic people.
Honorable Chair.
Okay.
You are right.
So Chief Executive, I will wait, and the Chief, Chief Director, we'll wait till you come up with this law, let's streamline this and then it will help everybody. All right. Okay, Honorable, uh, community water systems, you are discharged. And Minister, you are also discharged. Thank you very
Thank you very much.
For coming. Now, any other agency that I haven't called? Or any agency that wants me to call them?
Those who attended upon us, Ministry of Health, Ministry of Water and Sanitation, Ministry of Wex, Housing and Water Resources, we are grateful to you for attending upon us, we thank our auditors, our media people and our members. Tomorrow, we will look at Ministry of Justice and Attorney General, Attorney General's Department, and that you have the Copyright Office, the Legal Aid Commission, the Office of the Register of Companies, Economic and Organized Crime Office, General Legal Council. And then we also have Ministry of Environment, Science and Technology. And that we have the C S I R S and other public institutions. And then we have the extra ministerial agencies, the P P A, P U R C and the others. And yesterday, we asked that the Ministry of Land and Natural Resources join the environment ministry because the same minister takes care of the environment ministry and then we can attend upon them on the issues that had been raised in the reports that we couldn't meet with them yesterday. So on this note, I'd like to bring today's meeting to an end and thank you all for coming.